will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, Click on the district link and then select Board of Education and Board Docs Agenda and tonight's meeting to follow along on our website. There will be two opportunities to address the board tonight. The first being Agenda Item 6.01. That first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.02. If you are going to speak, please state the agenda item you're referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There are signup sheets in the back if you do want to speak during public comments. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Mr. Bellardo?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, I would like to recognize Board Member Bellardo to discuss those great awards we have this evening.
Thank you, President Cotter. Yes, for district highlights and recognitions tonight, we are going to honor those employees in the district that have gone above and beyond. And I, we emphasize that, that we have many employees that do incredible work, day in, day out, year in, year out basis. And these folks that we are going to honor tonight from the board and the administration have even gone just a tick even above that. Mrs. Davidson and I, for just the last couple of years, have been the ones to read through the nominations and so on, although I know all the board members have done that. And I can tell you from our perspective as board members, the recognition this year and every year is well, well deserved. In just a moment, I'm going to go to the podium and I'll be calling some people up who will then be honoring the person that has won that award from their school or wherever they work in the district. But I first want to say that the awards tonight that you will see are just kind of extra-special this year. These awards were, there was a challenge put out to the AP Computer Science Design Classes at Westerville North. This is at the end of last school year. And a number of them, they were asked to come up with a design. My understanding is that even Dr. Kellogg went and met with some of the students and really talked through, this is what this award means, this is how special and unique this award is. And this is the first time we are asking it to be created in-house. So there was a competition, there were designs, and there were two finalists, and out of those finalists, this particular award design was chosen. And then it was manufactured in the shop at Westerville North. So it was not only designed by those students, but it was manufactured, created by those students. So a big shout-out to the student staff, et cetera, at Westerville North for allowing us to make them even maybe a little more unique and special this year. The only other thing I need to let you know is, when you pick them up, pick them up from the bottom.[275.22][275.22](Laughter). They are fragile, so pick them up from the bottom. The board, the board has asked that I not touch them.[285.64][285.64](Laughter) For that reason. Mr. Byrd refers to me as clumsy, so I think he means that in a good way. That's enough from me. I just wanted you to know how unique this award was and how special the physical award was. So, Board, Administration, if you would go front and I will go to the podium. For our first A-plus award from Charrington Elementary School, I'd like to have Edna Moore come up to make that presentation.
So my family was fortunate enough to have Lee Rutherford as my son's second-grade teacher last year. She's talented, compassionate, supportive, and caring. She understands that no two children will learn the same, and she makes sure that every child has the tools that they require based on their unique needs. Sensory stations, classical music, brain breaks are just some of the things that she utilized in the classroom. Her writing workshop allowed kids to have a creative outlet and discover just how fun writing can be. Her support and enthusiasm were always felt, whether it was a quick email during the day or a voicemail at 6:00 on a Friday night, just so that I knew my son did great on his star test going into the weekend. I was always informed both on his struggles and his victories. In addition, she continues to care for, even after these kids move on to the next grade. Lee Rutherford is a great teacher who deserves to be recognized for the incredible work that she does so that our children can reach their full potential.
Well, thank you. That's okay. From Emerson Magnet, Suzy Miller, come up to make a presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this award, Senator Haddon. And I am so sorry for the view, you guys. This is called ode, this is called ode to Norma Haddon. My first day of school was day after Thanksgiving break, nervous and anxious to see what friends I might make. I enter the office and was met by a smile. Her name was Norma, a classy woman with a lot of style, always willing to lend a hand and share her knowledge with all she meets, even when the students are called to the office and asked to take a seat. With uncertainty, they wait to be called by Mrs. Doolittle, who determines their fate. White-knuckled to the chair, they brace. But then they see a familiar face. Norma greets them with a smile, along with words of wisdom, to help them grow and become responsible young adults when their time has come. Maybe doubting themselves at first, but after hearing her words, it's easy to become believers that they too can become high achievers. Norma truly cares and only wants the best from students who face the classroom and the world with all its tests. Oh, her cakes, my goodness, they are great. With her own money and precious time, she toiled in the kitchen to bake for teachers and staff to give them a boost. With all her pretty and sweet confections, we were all seduced. After God created Norma, the mold was broken. Kind words, kind thoughts and words are always spoken, although at times she gets twirled up, that's hers. I'll give you all a heads-up, we are all fortunate to know and work with Mrs. Haddon.
Also from Emerson Magnet, would Amanda Miller come forward to make a presentation?
I would like to recognize the four Westerville educators involved in the Chinese Global Penpals Program through Emerson Elementary Magnet School. I was in awe and inspired by their dedication. Chris Doolittle, Kate Mantenix, Shannon Gobler, and Ping Ping Mo were our fearless leaders this summer as 11 Emerson families navigated our way to Hangzhou, China, to meet with our friends. Kate, with her creative vision, began this program by coordinating Chinese lessons before school on Wednesday mornings for Emerson third graders in 2015. She worked many hours to develop this program and guide student learning beyond a textbook. As she collaborated with Ping Ping Mo, the idea of visiting each other with a group of students soon became reality. She spent countless hours planning, showing her students how to dream big. I remember after encountering several different obstacles with travel plans, speaking with Kate and asking her, are we really sure we can do this? And she looked at me, as serious as Kate can be, and said, oh, this is happening.[734.43][734.43](Laughter). This speaks to her drive and dedication to the program and her students. Shannon graciously kept the program going in 2017, when Kate was selected for a new position in the district. She came to school early to continue the Chinese lessons and develop a plan to help bring our experience full circle. She coordinated fundraisers, finalized travel schedules, and worked to plan an exciting two weeks in China, and we could count on Shannon to be at every event. Chris Doolittle made sure that we were always safe and operating within district regulations. She collaborated with, I say it twice. She collaborated with the PTA treasurer, as well as the Rotary Club, to make sure every dollar we fundraised was accounted for. While in China, she cared for our students and made sure they were safe, once again. Ping Ping Mo, who was seven months pregnant at the time of our visit, planned adventures for students and parents throughout the two weeks while we toured Hangzhou, Beijing, and Xi'an. These adventures included touring beautiful Westlake, walking on the Great Wall of China, and seeing the Terracotta Warriors. She cared and taught our Westerville students like they were her own. The effort that was put forth to make this program happen is unmatched in another school event I have been a part of before. It has definitely been an unforgettable experience for all of us. Nominating them for this award is the least I can do to honor these educators' sense of adventure, love of learning, and dedication to our Westerville students and families. And I want to say thank you to all four for this incredible experience.[836.01][836.01](Laughter).
Okay, so Kelly Ogletree, she's my counterpart, she's my other intervention specialist, she is an exceptional teacher with high expectations for students. She provides positive reinforcement, structure, and routine, as well as a caring and nurturing environment. Though this is only her second year at Point View, you would never know it. From day one, she embraced Point View as her own. She utilizes her strong background in working with students with disabilities, her wealth of knowledge and interventions, behavior plans, and she is building a strong community within the school. She jumps in whenever she can, as well as being a calming presence for our students. When a student is in crisis, you will always see Kelly remaining calm and using strategies to de-escalate through her words and her actions. She is always willing to help students regardless of their needs or their challenges. She is not afraid of a difficult situation with a student, and she always sees it as a challenge that can be overcome. She is a safe place for many of our students and staff. One of her greatest strengths is that she has the eye to see a problem, but then find the innovation to find the solution. You will never find Kelly complaining about anything. Rather, you see her taking initiative to make the issue better. For example, students were having escalating behaviors at recess, and our DDA's and teachers are quickly becoming frustrated. So Kelly didn't complain about it, Kelly wrote a grant. And the grant which she was awarded was for additional play equipment to cater to our students' fine and gross motor needs, as well as their social-emotional needs. When volunteering for a project or a task, Kelly is trustworthy and completing it with excellent. Her yes always means yes. She's aided in Career Day, Leadership Day, Student Leadership Roles, Student Leadership Teams, PBIS Initiatives, and Behavior Reinforcement Systems for Students. Another strength of Kelly's is her ability to work with a variety of teachers and personnel at Point View. She is kind, respectful, and strives to maximize each person's potential on the team. She is a vital member of our student support team, the Leader in Me Initiative, leading student-led academic initiatives, and case-managing students with cross-categorical needs. Kelly has made a lasting impact on our students, families, community members, and faculty at Point View Elementary.
Good evening. I am the District Behavior Specialist, and I am familiar with many, many teachers across the district. And Mrs. Nelson here is an impeccable teacher, and I've seen so many different teachers with their classroom management strategies. She goes above and beyond for all of her students on a daily basis. While taking her daily data for social-emotional reasons and academic reasons, she provides a high level of accommodations and creative interventions for all of her students in order for them to achieve their goals. Mrs. Nelson will self-evaluate her interventions, and she'll ask for criticism on her academics and her social-emotional interventions that she's doing with her kids on a regular basis. She's always asking how she can improve. And she doesn't really need to improve because she is one of the best general education teachers that I work with because she is constantly meeting the needs of all of her kids. In addition to the love, positive, and calm support Mrs. Nelson provides each child, she has impeccable classroom management while making it appear seamless. So we all know that there's behaviors in classrooms that occur, and she just appears cool, calm, and collected on a daily basis, when probably inside she's a ball of nerves. She's able to constantly multitask numerous individual needs of students while moving her class through the routines. She is able to meet the needs of her students due to her organization, her arrangement of her classroom, following through with routines, using timers, calming music, I could go on and on and on of all the positive interventions that she uses with her children on a daily basis. I am honored to work with Kate Nelson.
From Genoa Middle School, I'd like to have Mary Jo Balk come forward for a presentation.
It is my pleasure, along with my colleagues, to have nominated Emily Kristoff as she is most deserving of this award. As mentioned in our recommendation, Emily's an exemplary teacher. She's passionate, innovative, and deeply caring. She somehow manages to meet each student at his or her level and push them to the next. Her warm and inviting charisma charges her classroom with energy, and this energy ignites discovery. I have mentored and worked with myriad teachers over the years, yet Emily rises above in her devotion to our craft. Though we are constantly inundated with data, evaluation forms, colorful OST grids, and OTES madness, Emily perseveres. She's one of the first to arrive each morning and typically one of the last to leave each evening. She eagerly offers treasures from her coffers of experience to help fledgling teachers. Her generosity is boundless. Emily Kristoff is the kind of teacher you would want your children to have, even more so. She's the kind of person you would want your children to become. She's most deserving of this honor, and we are blessed and lucky to be working with her. Congratulations.
Also from Genoa Middle School, Leah Gaines and Victoria Holt, please come forward.
So Victoria couldn't be here this evening, so it's just me. Since becoming Assistant Principal just over a year ago, Mr. Pointer has worked hard to create an environment of honesty, respect, positivity, and fun for both students and staff at Genoa Middle School. During this past summer break, he came in and painted murals at the school to create a more inviting atmosphere for the students. He created a group called LEAD for some of our male students. He's always visible in the halls, lunchroom, outside, working to make connections with all of our students. Last year, he revamped our staff meeting PD and has created personalized professional development where groups of teachers can work together on their own professional goals. During staff meetings, he likes to play little games and give out trophies for various accomplishments. He has also established the Donut Train to bring staff donuts and coffee on occasion. That's the main reason we wrote this.[1394.83][1394.83](Laughter). All of the above-mentioned reasons illustrate how Mr. Pointer embodies the district's mission statement and show how each and everything he does has a purpose and is way above and beyond his responsibilities. Thank you, Mr. Pointer, for all you do for Genoa, we appreciate you.
It's my pleasure to be here to give this award to Kim Swenson from Westerville North High School. Kim deserves recognition for her work with students at Westerville North. She goes above and beyond in her efforts to create an atmosphere of respect, equality, and acceptance for all young people in our schools, regardless of their unique and non-traditional ways. She truly opens the minds of the young people she works with by helping to increase their capacity for empathy and compassion towards others. For the past six years, she's been a role model for my four daughters. I'm going to try not to cry. She has shown them what a strong, confident, intelligent woman looks like. For this, I am grateful. I appreciate all the way she has supported them and helped them to see the world with an open mind and an open heart. For these reasons and many, many more, she is truly a treasure to our family and to Westerville City Schools. Thank you, Kim.
Good evening. I am honored to be able to recognize my colleague, Lindsay Manzo, this evening. Lindsay is dedicated to providing rigorous and relevant learning experiences for students in science. Lindsay's constant energy and excitement about learning is contagious, and I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to work alongside her to develop and support career pathways for students. Lindsay has played a vital role in developing our health-career exploration experience for students in the health pathway. We currently have 16 students rotating through 16 different departments at St. Anne's this year, in addition to leading the work in developing our engineering pathway, and it wouldn't happen without Lindsay. She is an organization master who facilitates school-to-school courses that encourage student and staff collaboration. Lindsay is also the Google Doc guru to help organize off-campus learning experiences and field trips among all three high schools. Lindsay can find a way to turn any event into a science learning opportunity, including activities with her children's elementary school. Most recently, she helped turn a tie-dying activity into a hands-on science learning experience about mass. Lindsay provides support and resources to our district's secondary science instructors so that they can continue to develop and provide meaningful learning experiences in the science classroom. Her work, oftentimes behind the scenes, helps our district achieve the mission to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live. So congratulations.
Alan Hunt is an amazing asset to Westerville City Schools. He is at the bus barn at 6:00 in the morning and a lot of times doesn't leave until after 6:00 PM. He puts his job above anything else. He loves his students, every one of them. I was actually with him when he received the email that he had won the award. His first response was, "I'm not done with my job yet until after the start time of the meeting." Speaks volumes of him and how dedicated he is to each and every one of our students on the bus. Most people in the district do not know his name because he is busy behind his desk looking at footage of bus video cameras and keeping our kids and transportation staff safe. Even on the weekends, Alan is busy when there are field trips. If there is an accident, he is always there to help guide them in what to do. However, if you ask anyone in the district if they know the man in the cowboy hat, they will know exactly who you are talking about. Alan is always there, even if there is trouble, he is there with a smile and ready to greet you and help you along the way. Thank you so much, Alan, for going over and beyond in keeping our children and transportation staff safe.
Thank you. 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 Well done. That concludes these A-plus awards, but on behalf of the board and staff administration, I just really want to repeat a big thank you to the students and staff at North that made these awards just a little more special even. And it goes without saying, which means you always want to say it, these folks go above and beyond because of the passion that they have for what they do and for who they are serving. It is the servant's heart that allows people to rise above just doing the job. And these people go far beyond, as do many, many of our entire district staff. So from us, a huge thank you to you. Will you give them one more round of applause? And at this time, for those of you that choose not to stay for the rest of the board meeting, you may exit because there's going to be some pictures in the hallway. Thank you once again.
At the schools, they do.
What's that?
Nicole was asking if they do anything like that. For students, it's mostly at the schools, and they do that.
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting idea in a court.
It was nice, because it was like, yeah. If we didn't do it at regular board meetings, then we had like a separate event.
Yeah, we do that, but it's not for students again. The Gem Awards at the end of the year. But yeah, the student thing, I like that idea for, I'm always looking for one Westerville. How do we do one Westerville? Those are always fun.
Those good folks.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, sister, next thing, I'm going to pass the plate though, really.
That's right.
Okay, now that everybody's exited, well, not everybody. Most people have exited. We are on Agenda Item 4.01, approving minutes as read of the regular board meeting, the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on Monday, October 8th, 2018. My, I'm having trouble reading tonight. Anyway, we don't generally vote on these minutes to approve them, but are there any questions or comments about the minutes? And then they're approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Facilities Community Communication Plan Update. I believe that Mr. Vibran's is going to be talking about this.
Same thing happened the last time I gave a presentation. The room emptied, but I will not take that personally in my mind's eye. We still have a huge crowd waiting on every word that I have to say. President Cotter, Vice President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. At the close of the board's facilities work session three weeks ago, I was asked to provide a communications and community engagement plan for the next phase of this facilities process. So I'm pleased to give you a brief overview this evening of that plan. There are several goals that we expect to achieve through this engagement plan. First, we want to ensure that interested constituents have access to information that describes how earlier staff and community feedback helped shape the development of the proposed facilities plan. We also want to provide interested constituents the opportunity to share additional thoughts and feedback on the components of this plan. Then in order to collect that feedback, we first must explain what the plan includes, noting any adjustments made from the facility committee's original recommendations, as well as possible timeframes in which the projects would be completed. We should also share any financial implications of the plan and assess the community's desire to provide additional resources necessary to execute various components of the plan. And then finally, we should make any necessary adjustments to the facilities plan based upon community feedback and sentiment toward providing additional financial support. So how are we going to achieve these goals? There are three primary components to this outreach effort. The first is building awareness. The second is conducting research, and then finally, community engagement. The awareness phase actually kicks off this evening with this presentation and will continue through November 20th, which is the day before Thanksgiving break. And this sounds like an aggressive timeframe, and it is, but I believe that once we hit Thanksgiving break, there's a higher likelihood of losing people's interest as thoughts turn to the holiday season, and we're going to be doing a lot of work in a short period of time before we hit that lull. We will use both traditional and non-traditional strategies to build awareness of the opportunity for people to add their voice to this conversation. Earned media, paid advertising, and all of these other awareness-building tools that we typically use will be enhanced with some tactics that aren't always part of our daily communication efforts. This includes print material drops around the community, hanging posters in grocery stores, retail locations, and restaurants, setting up displays in the library and other community facilities, the electronic distribution of information by our community partners, and paid advertising through social media or other online channels. We received a lot of positive feedback for the earlier Times Change Engagement Campaign, so we're going to keep that theme, but with a slight modification. Instead of using the tagline of "schools should do," we're going to change that to something that reflects what the facilities package provides to students and community, and that will be Times Change: Modern Safer Spaces. Regarding research, while there is value and validity to the online feedback mechanisms that we've used in the past and will continue to use this time, I do believe we also need to be a bit more scientific in our approach during this next phase of community engagement. I'm recommending that we conduct a statistically valid poll to determine the community's desire for identified facilities components, given that some of those components also entail added operating costs. Not only will these findings inform communication and community engagement efforts moving forward, but they will help the board determine if there's interest in bringing to our schools and community the various opportunities that this facilities plan provides. Feedback received through our in-person community engagement activities will round out the data that we have available to us moving forward. Some of the concepts that I believe we should measure as part of our research include support for students attending schools closer to home, with new facilities constructed in the south end of the district, increased safety and security initiatives across the district, balancing elementary enrollment while expanding all-day kindergarten to all elementary schools, renovations at older buildings identified in the plan, making swing space available to temporarily house students while the schools are being renovated, and considerations regarding funding of the facilities initiatives. You heard me use the term "in-person community engagement," and that's because in addition to our online engagement options, we will have several opportunities for anyone interested to hear directly from district officials and provide their feedback in a face-to-face environment. Our in-person engagement opportunities should focus upon sharing the components and financial implications of the plan while affording attendings the opportunity to respond, ask questions, and share additional ideas. And up on the screen, you see the meetings that have been set already for the community to have this opportunity. We'll hold these opportunities across the district on those dates and times, and then we also have three opportunities set for staff. Those will occur at 4:00 p.m. every day, and any interested staff member can attend any one of those meetings to hear an update on the plan and its components. As for the online feedback component, we will reach out again to the nearly 26,000 individuals who were provided the opportunity to participate the last time and attempt to grow the numbers that we achieved, which included 1,691 participants sharing 2,390 thoughts and more than 51,000 ratings issued. When all is said and done, what is it that we can do with the feedback that we receive? Well, we can make potential modifications to facilities plan components. We could also make modifications to the sequencing of projects. We should know if there's community interest in some of the innovative and expanded instructional programming the facilities plan affords to us. And then finally, we should have a better understanding of the community's desire to fund facilities packages. That's the 30,000-foot level view of this communication and community engagement initiative, and so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I have questions or comments?
Couple. First of all, Greg, I really appreciate the approach you're taking to triangulate the data. You know that I've raised that issue, and I want to publicly thank you for your attention to that and the thoughtfulness that you are giving to make sure that we have multiple avenues that we can evaluate against each other and identify how strong the data actually are. I appreciate that very much. I do have a couple of questions. One is, as I look at the list of places where the face-to-face meetings are to be held, those are all schools. Is there any opportunity to provide one or more of those sessions in non-school venues?
We did look at holding at least one opportunity in a non-school venue, and unfortunately, given the schedules of the facility and the schedules of the individuals that would need to be there, there just wasn't a way to make that happen. We can certainly look at providing another location, but the locations that were selected are strategic in that these are the locations that likely would see impact should we be able to proceed with the plan's components.
That underscores yet again the importance of the traditional and non-traditional methods that you've identified to get word out. We all know that holding meetings in schools, sometimes people don't come unless they are part of that particular school community, so your outreach components attain even greater importance. So that's, I appreciate you're trying to do that, and I appreciate the efforts to make sure we let everybody know. The other thing that I wanted to underscore is something that you underscored in your comments, which is that the facilities plan, the components that are being put out there, the idea is we genuinely want and will be relying on the feedback that we get. Too often, people are accustomed by things that happen in other places, not here, to think that when a plan goes out, it's already done, and there's no point in talking about it. That's not what's happening here, and it's extremely important, again, that people understand that what they have to say really, truly matters, and we very much are interested in their thoughts and comments about that. Again, I thank you for your traditional and non-traditional and your triangulation. That is very helpful. I also thank you for the caution that I'm assured you're taking in the wording of the questions. That is vitally important, and I know that you are being cautious, and we continue to be highly deliberative about what those questions are. The problem with something like this is when we talk about concepts such as swing space, the need is to make sure that people understand not only what swing space means, but also what it means for what the building is currently. And it's difficult to get all that in without having questions that are 300, 500, 600 words long. So I thank you for your attention to that, and I will be really looking forward to seeing the end product. Good work, Greg.
Thank you, thank you. And I do appreciate those comments, particularly the last one about the wording and needing to make sure that bias is removed out of any of those, but the difficulty, as you noted, in making sure that people have enough information. But we also, I think, should realize that many times, some of the decisions that will be made by community members may be made absent information, so it's also good to get that gut-level reaction and see where people stand with and without all of the important information that we're going to try to communicate through this plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Might be a good point, Greg, just to point out, we do have a session come up for the community in Westerville South, so for anyone who's paying attention, you want to comment on that real quick?
October 29th, Westerville South, given that we are moving forward with that project as well as some safety and security enhancements across the district, but primarily at Westerville South, on Monday, October 29th, which is next Monday, the school will host an open house beginning at 6:30 p.m. They're going to have architectural renderings throughout the building, and those renderings will be in the location where the work is to be done, so you'll be able to take a look at what the facility looks like presently compared to what the rendering shows the future of the facility to look like. And then they are also going to hold three presentations, the same presentation three times on the half hour. So the first presentation will be at 6:30, the next one at 7:00, and the final one at 7:30. The event goes until 8:00 p.m. Entire community is welcome to come and see what the future of Westerville South looks like.
Thank you so much for explaining the plan, and I do appreciate the variety of methods you're using to try and reach out to the community and get their feedback. Thanks again, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6.01, Public Comments. We do not have anyone signed up to provide public comments for this agenda item. Moving on to Agenda Items 7.01 and 7.02, can I have a motion in a second to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Are you doing them both together?
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure for my notes here. President Cotter, members of the board, we have an amendment to the fiscal year 19 annual appropriations. As I'm looking at the document, and this attachment says fiscal year 18, that is a mistake. It's our current appropriations that we are amending. Most of the amendments are just due to changes in our grants. Most significantly, we received additional allocation for restoration funds with our Idea B, which is our special education grant. It's a federal grant. They determined that they weren't funding us at the level that they should be funding in us. Several school districts across the state saw increases, so it's a one-time increase that we'll see that we're able to spend over the next couple of years. The other adjustment is due to the building fund for South High School renovations and the safety and security. We're only appropriating what we think will be spent in this fiscal year, so if that changes, we may end up increasing that later in the year. And then the rest of it's budget increases for just small budget increase requests that we've gotten for principals' funds and student activity funds. So that's the appropriation resolution. And then the other is the September 30th, 2018 financial statements. It's the month end. For our general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of 71.7 million. We had year-to-date expenditures of 45.3 million, with an unencumbered fund balance of 128.4 million. All funds had year-to-date receipts of 86.7 million, year-to-date expenditures of 57.7 million, and unencumbered fund balances of 149.5 million. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a comment. I was thanking Greg effusively, but I need to thank you, Nicole. I want to thank you for the attention you've given since you arrived, making sure that we have all the information we need at all times. The texts, the emails are very much appreciated, all the information you're giving us. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback.
I concur, and I...
I concur, and I like how you give us all the same information and make sure we all have it. So it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I agree.
I like it, too.
We all like it.
Great. Thank you for that.
Can you please call a roll?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Items 8.01 through 8.07. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve those?
So moved or seconded.
Thank you, Paul.
Dr. Hopkins?
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. Dr. Kellogg, I'd like to present to you for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights included in this consent agenda are as follows. We have nine resignations from various classified and classified substitute positions and one termination from a classified pupil activity program, one contractual status change from our transportation office. We also have some one-time payments to cover such items as staff participation in various activities, including mentors who are invaluable supporters of our new teachers, RESA facilitators, support for various professional development activities, and the facilitation of some assessments throughout the year. We also have the employment of 11 individuals in various classified positions, the employment of two licensed teachers, the mentors and the RESA facilitators that I mentioned previously, and a number of supplemental contract and classified pupil activity programs. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9.01, Old Business, Final Reading for the 2019-2020 Academic Calendar. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve?
Second.
Oh, you're fine. So I think that we had a description on the minor changes that were made during our last meeting. Would you mind, please, calling the roll?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10.01, Policy 2111, Parent and Family Engagement. I see that we have...
Barb Wallace.
Are you here to talk about this one?
Yes.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. This policy is on parent and family engagement and is being brought to us due to updated changes in the language in the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, that was recently brought forward. And this includes expanding the definition of parents, how the mandates in both district and school plans need to be identified to provide opportunities for meaningful engagement. It addresses the need to pay particular attention to groups such as low socioeconomic, disabled, limited English proficiency, and minority when planning engagement.
Does anyone have questions or comments?
Looks like new business.
Okay, are you covering the next policy, too?
The next one, Dr. Jalkin will be presenting.
Okay, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 10.02, Policy 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity.
Good evening, President Cotter, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, and members of the board. I'm here tonight to recommend that the board approve the update of existing Board Policy 2260, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Educational Opportunity, to include a section addressing the district's responsibility to maintain investigatory records acquired or created during processes of investigation, review of complaints, and/or review of allegations of discrimination or harassment. The existing policy is being updated in accordance with state and federal law to identify the specific records to be maintained by the district because such records have been routinely required by the U.S. Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights during their review of such investigations. Based on the above, I'm recommending that the board approve the updated policy as proposed.
Does anyone have questions or comments?
I have two, and it's on the existing language that isn't asked to be changed.
Yes.
One is, am I correct in reading that there's basically no statute of limitations on when people can bring a complaint?
There is. I mean, there has to be within a reasonable period of time. One of our other policies addresses the timeframe within which a complaint it needs to bring. Their complaint, I'm not sure that it's included in this policy.
It's not.
Yes. It's included in another policy in regards to the complaint procedures for civil rights investigations.
Okay.
I'd be happy to look that up for you and get that information.
I just want to make sure that we're being clear. I also don't want to unwittingly create a situation where 50 years from now, after many of us are gone, literally, are gone, a complaint can be raised, and there's very little opportunity for a full due process because of that information. So I was concerned when I read that. The other concern I had, I was just wondering, under informal complaint procedure, says all complaints involving a district employee or any other adult member of the school district community against a student will be formally investigated. We are saying all complaints, not just informal complaints, not formal complaints, all complaints. Is that correct, or is it supposed to read all informal complaints involving district employees? The reason it came up in my mind, as I read that, I thought all complaints involving a district employee says to me, if I'm just reading it on its face value, even when I get an irate parent who calls me and is angrily alleging something that the next day they say, you know, I really didn't mean that, you knew that, right, Nancy? I would, according to all complaints, have to take that forward for a formal investigation. I just want to make sure that we are accurate in what we are saying is required when things happen.
I believe one of our other policies requires that complaints be put into writing, so either via email or written letter. So just a verbal complaint, I don't think would meet the criteria for investigation.
I don't think it does either.
Yeah.
But I don't want us to create a policy environment that suggests that it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's, those are my concerns, and I'm sorry, I should have called you before.
That's fine.
I was reading through it again tonight. I had focused earlier on the new stuff, and then when I read that, I thought, well, wait a minute. If I read this in a particular way, I think it says things that I'm not sure we're saying.
Okay, I can look into that further for you. I'm sorry.
I just want, I looked up the administrative guideline that goes with the policy, and it does have in there that the complaint must be filed within 30 days of the circumstances or event giving rise to the complaint, unless the time for filing is extended by the civil rights coordinator for good cause. So that's where that timepiece is.
Can we check to make sure that the language in the policy matches the language in the guideline?
Certainly.
That would be, I think, a big help to me at any rate.
Okay, be happy to do that.
And at a minimum, that there should be a reference of the policy
Yes.
to look at the administrative procedure, because I do think it's vague enough to be an exploitable loophole.
I do, too.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All good points. Moving on to Agenda Item 10.03, Policy 2261, Title I Services. Barb Wallace?
This policy that we are bringing to you tonight to recommend you adopt, again, talks about Every Student Succeeds Act. This expands the development and evaluation to teachers, principals, school leaders, paraprofessionals, specialized instructional support personnel, and charter school leaders in the Title I Services. It mandates the use of written methodology to verify supplemental, not supplant, and the comparability of services, and it eliminates the superintendent guidelines for staff participation in the development of professional development. Questions?
Any questions or comments?
I've got one. Why does it say charter school leaders? Why do we need to include that? I gotta find it.
I noticed that, too.
The charter schools are part of Westerville Schools?
No, 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 no. This is based on the law and the language in the law.
Yeah.
You would like to take that out?
If it needs to be there, it needs to be there. I just read that and thought, I'm not sure that there are charter schools that are part of Westerville City Schools.
No, they're not.
I know they aren't, but I just, that was a red flag for me, even though it's in green ink.
The last policy, 2261, is about parent and family members' participation in the title programs. This inserts language of family members instead of the word "parent." It changes the language to mirror Ohio's model of support and improvement. It adds consultation with employers, business leaders, and philanthropic organizations. It addresses the need to remove barriers to participation for low socioeconomic, disabled, limited English proficiency, and minority individuals. It mandates that engagement strategies are evidence-based. It mandates that the superintendent receives comments of individuals who are not satisfied with building engagement plans, and it expands parent training topics to include technology.
Any questions or comments?
I had one.
Okay, go ahead.
I agree with what's in this policy. What I am wondering, and Dr. Kellogg, this is probably a question for you, do you anticipate budgetary requirements that are going to come about because of the changes that this policy requires in what we do, the formalization of what we do?
That's good.
We have to sit down and evaluate that, determine if that'd be the case. Off the top of my head, I can't foresee why we would have to do that, but I think something worth investigating.
I've got a couple of thoughts, but I'll touch base with you later.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 10.05, Policy 2370.01, Blended Learning. Mr. Reeves?
Good evening, President Cotter, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. Policy recommendation 2730.01 is a new policy for blended learning. This is a policy that is required by the Ohio Revised Code 3301.35.3 regarding requirements for blended learning options. Because we offer blended learning instructional options in our district, we're required to have this policy. Looking at the policy, it is congruent and matches the wording in the law and actually codifies some of the things that we have been doing for quite a while. For example, it authorizes the superintendent to develop a program and guideline specific to the means with which we will evaluate our programs, use appropriate filters for our blended learning, how we will assess participating students, and so forth and so on. So this really just codifies in policies a lot of practices we've been doing for quite a while now.
Okay, are there any questions? No. You're very lucky, Mr. Reeves. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.01. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve our donations, which, of course, we always appreciate? So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item 11.02, can I please have a motion in a second to approve overnight and out-of-state field trips?
So moved.
Second.
Can you please call the roll?
Oh, I have a question.
Okay, you have a question? I'm sorry.
So I know, Mr. Reeves, I want to tell you, I appreciate your work with the four middle schools and having the cost become comparable between the schools, and also the alignment of criteria. And I know you're still working with them. I just would like to bring to the attention that 90 students, it says approximately 90 students are participating, which I am hoping this is a misprint from last year because they have the same enrollment that Heritage has, so I'm hoping they come back to us with a bigger number. And I know you said that would happen, but I just wanted to get it on the record that, you know, I want to make sure the trip is inclusive and all of our kids that can go have the ability to go.
Yes, I agree. We find this an incredibly valuable and enriching experience, and I did have the opportunity to reach out to all of our four middle school principals today, and I think what they did when they completed the form, they just put an arbitrary number that reflected what went in years past, because we're not even to the first registration deadline for, and so they're still gathering, all of our middle schools are still gathering registrants and participants and first payments on payment plans. And so probably in another month, they'll have a really, really good idea, all four of them, of what their numbers will be for this spring's trips.
Thank you so much. I truly appreciate it.
We do appreciate all your work on these DC trips that the middle schools take. Okay, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12.01, Public Comment. Again, we do not have anyone signed up to give public comment for this agenda item, so we will move on to Agenda Item 13.01, Board Comments. Is there anyone that has comments they'd like to make?
You know, I have one quick comment, and I wish I would have said it before when Greg was up here. I want to echo what Nancy said when we were talking about community engagement in facilities, because when I was going through it, too, I noticed that all of the meeting places were at schools, and I worry about that portion of our district that don't have children in our schools. And I do know, Greg, you said that was really hard, but I think that's so, so important. It might be a missed opportunity. I don't know if maybe we could circle back around, try a coffee, or just something else. I would really appreciate it. So thank you. You had great questions on there.
Maybe churches
Yeah.
Have space.
Maybe.
A lot of them have large congregations that live here.
Community center?
Yeah, community center, senior center.
All those places.
Yeah.
Thank you. I know that's a lot.
Just another night. We can put something else on.
Do what?
They meet in the day, though.
Whatever it is, we'll find a couple more opportunities.
Community center, I assume, is a place you've already looked at, but that would be a place.
Yep, we can do that.
So thanks.
So thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else with board comments this evening?
Yeah, I think I'll go ahead. First, I just want to call out, and Greg, I know that you were quoted in the story already relative to the E-Rate program, you know, brought to my attention by a concerned citizen, the funds associated with the Federal Communications Commissions and the available funds for upgrading available bandwidth. I would ask that, given that there is money that's allocated currently, Westerville City School Districts, that's not yet encumbered, we go back and take a look at that relative to any other potential improvement areas that we could target those funds for. I know that we've just done a ton of work in technology uplift, but that program, in all likelihood, is going to go away in terms of federal funding and other support, and if we can find a way not to leave a dollar on the table in that particular instance before that program is defunded, I think it would be a good use of time. So, and coming off of that topic, need to share with the community something that I've been talking about with my fellow board members in the administration for a few days, a couple weeks, and that is that effective October 31st, I will be tendering my resignation from the Board of Education. It is an extremely difficult and emotional decision for me, but I want to make sure I provide a little bit of background for the why. In the last couple of years, I've been speaking extensively nationally. I'm very fortunate, and I've said this multiple times, I'm very fortunate to have a career that did not exist when I graduated from high school, and I use that particular point frequently in the aspect of my board service to this community, as well as on speaking tours for cybersecurity in general, reminding folks that if we're preparing our children for education, preparing our children for jobs today with the education programs and curriculum that we have, we're already behind because those were not that we have, we're already behind, because those were not courses that were available when I was a kid, and we should be doing a better job of, you know, looking forward to the future and providing those educational opportunities for our children in this district. So with the last couple of years and all of this speaking, about 30 or 35 times on national stages and even in small settings, I've built a reputation. And I've built a reputation of being somebody that can articulate really complex issues within digital and information security in easy-to-understand ways, and delivering those messages with a little bit of sarcasm and cynicism. I know that's really hard for people to believe. And as a result, I was actively recruited by a company that I've agreed to go to work for. I'm extremely excited about it. It is truly one of those types of once-in-a-lifetime dream jobs. I will be going to work for a company and relocating to Colorado, and that's the reason for my resignation from the Board on the 31st. This will be my last board meeting. It all has come about very, very quickly, and it is, it's a difficult thing to step away. I am very, very proud to be a member of this board. It's interesting to think about those things that I'm most proud of from an individual standpoint, because I can't. They're not, this is, I've said it so many times, the board only has power when it's constituted as a body in session. I only am empowered to be effective when I am given that right by means of sitting with these people here. And I think a lot of people believe that any elected position, but certainly school board, that their goal to get on the school board is to tell people how it is, and they're going to bring their ideas to the table, and they're going to make people listen. And I can tell you, after four and a half years, that's not what this job is about at all. This job is about listening to the community. This job is about being agreeably at opposite ends with some members of the community, as well as with members on the board, you know, by talking, debating, and coming to agreement, consensus, and compromise. So I've learned a lot on the board. I love this board. I love this school district, I love this community. At no point in my life did I ever think, at this age and stage, I would be picking up stakes and moving several hundred miles away. So I hope that that gives an indication about how amazing this opportunity is for me. I give much of the credit to being a school board member, being in front of a microphone, talking to the community, talking in public. It is a learned skill, and to be able to do it frequently has been helpful in that growth. I am extremely proud of Point View. I always will be. That was one of the, you know, beginning-to-end projects that I was able to be a part of. The other day, I did a podcast with a great guy in our community, Tommy. And Tommy lives in Minerva Park, and when I went to go to his home studio to record the podcast, I could stand in his driveway and see the land in Minerva Park that we were able to work with, the Minerva Park local government, as well as the developer. I remember that conversation when it started, about $110,000 to improve the road. And then I remember the rainy night that we went out, Mark, Dr. Kellogg, Jeff LaRose, it was pouring rain, and we went to Minerva Park City Hall and sat and had those conversations. And now we have amazing opportunities in the south end of the district as a result. And I think, two things that, you know, I will leave you with. The personal point that I'm very, very proud of, the first is that in my present year, my signature is on my youngest son's diploma. And this past end-of-school year, I had the really humbling experience of being able to speak at my daughter's graduation and give the address for Westerville Central High School, and thank the community, as I will again, and this board, for all the support they've given me through the tragedy that my family suffered, and just supporting us and holding us up. No one rose the vote alone, and I couldn't be going where I'm going without you. And this board has definitely become true friends, each and every one of you. So, thank you. Thank you to the community. Like I said, I hope you can understand that if I'm willing to make this kind of change, it must be for something special. And I'm still keeping roots here, mainly as a backup plan, because I'm not going to lie, it's scary to make these kind of decisions and these kind of moves, but I'm really excited for the future of this school district. I know the board will have to take on additional responsibilities for finding a replacement, and for that, I apologize. I know what that's like, because that's how I came on the board. And I'll close out a much-too-longly goodbye by saying, if there's one regret that I have, it's not being able to fulfill a promise that I would have loved to have filled, which was holding this seat as long as Cindy Crew did. I will always be thankful that I got the opportunity to be her successor. And I will probably always regret that I didn't get to serve as long as she did. So, thank you. Thank you to the administration, teachers, I love you. You've done a great job, and you'll continue to do amazing work in this district. And staff just had so much fun on so many different things that we've worked on, so thank you.
Anyone else want to make comments?
Thank you, Richard, thank you. I will miss you.
Seems we're all speechless, but thank you for your service, Richard. You will truly be missed. We really appreciate everything you've done for the district and all your caring for the community. It'd be difficult shoes to fill, so.
Richard didn't say, but he has promised me that he will leave a bowtie attached to that laptop right there. I appreciate Richard. Sometimes I needed just a little guy time up here, and Richard was able to bring it. Nothing against, you know, well, I mean, you know, I'm in on the board. I always say one too many things. That was it.
You were so good for the bowtie.
I, so good. Been a good colleague, good contributor, good community member, and a good, intelligent, thoughtful questioner and challenger. Questioner as we move forward, challenger to other entities that don't always do what we think they should do. That's part of the nature of the beast, we challenge one another. So, we, I don't speak for the board, but I think we really wish you just tremendous success in the Mile High State. And leave it at that.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 14.01. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, November 19th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. here at Early Learning Center. And then, Agenda Item 15.01. Can I please have a motion and a second to enter executive session to discuss the appointment of a school official?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we will be going into executive, oh, I'm sorry, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Valardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, so we'll be moving into executive session. We will not have any business after executive session, for those of you listening at home.
Hi, Ms. 723.
Thank you.